I will call to order the Monday, March 9th meeting of the common council and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undoubted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
And Alderperson yours.
Here.
We have everyone present this evening, thank you for that. Next we have public comment. Again, if there's anyone that wishes to speak tonight under public comment, there should be a sign up sheet at the podium, we would ask you to sign the sheet and also state your name and address. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening?
My name's Peter Philandrino, so I'm at 139 West Chapel Royal Drive, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the apartment complex that will be going in at Chapel or Scenic Ridge. The big things I think that we run into concerns and first of all, I'd like to thank Luke for talking and helping out and the police department talking as well and working on traffic concerns, I know they were there last week, to look at our stop sign and not going through, and I think within, right outside my house, I was safe for that time period, but within 10 minutes, they pulled someone over. I felt bad for our neighbors. But yesterday, driving last night to Glacier Edge where I played basketball with a bunch of guys, I realized this wasn't just a neighborhood problem. As I go up to a stop sign and sure enough, someone goes right through the stop sign on the way to Glacier Edge. So it's not, I don't think, just our neighborhood, it's a society in general that stop signs necessarily aren't, need to be enforced, and we can kind of roll through, right through it. And the biggest concerns I think that runs into is with additional traffic, additional cars, and not having a second access point to those apartments. I think we've all come to the realization, especially after last year, the apartments are going to be there, we need to live with them, and it was planned well before we all showed up. I guess I encourage to look at it as, is there something that we can delay a little bit to have, be more proactive than reactive to this? We don't have a bridge yet on Locust Drive, I know it's in development, but it's not there yet, and we have according about 200 and some cars or 107 total complexes that's going to be in our development. There's only one way to go in, and there's only one way to go out for all that entire development. Across the street and the island, it's all going to be multifamily too, so there's not going to be just single homes. I guess the biggest thing is, I know the, I think it's the Horseman Farms, that's ability to purchase that and down the road, still a little bit of ways. I guess what I'm asking and what I think a lot of our neighbors are asking, can we wait till that's an ability to own and have a second access point out, so there's two ways to go. Last week I brought up, our situation isn't the same as Cathedral Point where they're going to have apartment complexes there. We're not the same by the apartment complexes by, I'm sorry, I don't know the names, but by Kuko's restaurant up there. Both of those are right by a street, the main street, and go right out through the street. Out of those three, we're the only ones that are going to affect the neighborhood and go through the neighborhood to get in and out of the complexes. Cathedral Point where it's designed is going to be right next, in and out, right to the main street. So we're not the same as the other complexes, so I don't think we can be referred to that. You know, the big concerns we have is, yeah, just like any community, the kids going to school, walking to school, coming back, not stopping, but the amount of trips that go up and down one street, you know, we heard, you know, 400 additional trips. That was the last year's council, that was going to add $400 trips and the other one got approved. So I believe I sent some of you guys my results, I did my own traffic study on the last day of the, of the school year and found 95 trips within a one hour period already, and that wasn't even with all the current houses set up, that wasn't even with the apartment complexes. I was a little surprised, I didn't realize we had so many people going back and forth to school, but I think with warmer weather, people drive, go get coffee, do this and that. So I guess the 400 trips is a little concerning, I don't think, I think it's more, and I think it will bring more, and without having any type of access point, it's just going all up West Chapel Royal Drive, and it is a steep slope. We talked about if you could put speed bumps, it just doesn't work. Speed bumps if you put on there, they're going to go up it, and you've driven that street in the winter, it is very, you're going to stop and you're going to slide back down. I have to go, if there's any snow, we have to go down the hill to come back up the hill because you're just not going to get onto it. So I guess I asked, there's one, okay, 200 additional cars dealing with that traffic as well. Then you go down West Chapel Royal Drive, that's another concern on traffic, because they'll come down and it's, it's like, feels like a fun roller coaster going down this, down the hill in your car. My neighbor up in the kitty corner in the front yard, she's crashed her car a couple times in snow embankments because it's a steep slope, and in the wintertime again, it's going to slide down, it's just going to have 200 more cars that are going to go up and down that street. So I think that's the biggest thing that I have concern, and my biggest proposal is a way to understand apartments are coming, but can we delay this till we have a proactive approach to sit here and go, we have a second access point in and out for the apartments to accommodate them and the traffic that we have, and to keep our neighborhood as safe and, and as I mentioned last time, you know, I want to make it livable, you know, you move to Verona, it's a great community, there's great people, you know, you go to Little League, you see people, you go to soccer, you see people, it's a great community. But, you know, we moved here because it's, it's also can be safe, it's enjoyable, and, you know, I didn't come here to, I guess a lot of us didn't move here to say, hey, I want, I live on a street that's capable of having 7,000 trips on my street. If I lived on Main Street, I used to live on Main Street in my other town, I expected that, and that's why we moved from there. I guess living in a nicer, higher end area just didn't seem to make sense that we should have this much traffic up and down our street that the kids can't play in the front yard. So that's my, my plea, my proposal, that can we delay this till we at least have a second access point secured, so the apartments have two ways out because we are not like the other apartments, we're the only one that's going to go through the residential neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I always give three times, anyone else that wants to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Next we have approval of minutes from the February 23rd meeting of the common council. The minutes have been included with your packet, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed no. Motion carried. Under mayor's business this evening, I have nothing to report. We'll move on to the administrator's report, Mr. Burns please.
Yeah, thank you, I do have a few updates this evening. First wanted to report on the couple of fire department positions the city's recruiting for. The application deadline is closed for the deputy fire chief position. The city received a total of 44 applicants, and the police and fire commission is working with Chief Giver to screen those applicants and move on to the interview process for filling the deputy fire chief position. We are still recruiting for, actually two fire science intern positions. These are new positions for a new intern program that the city is creating for students in the M A T C Fire Science Program. The idea is that these students would have quarters available at the new fire station once it's completed, they would receive a stipend from the city, and in exchange for that, they would be signing up to serve on calls and be taking shifts as part of our fire department and learning as they go to school. Application deadline for that program is running through March 19th. Wanted to remind everyone that we have a meeting, a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for next Monday, the 16th, at 6:00 PM. The topic is going to be on economic development. We're planning this as a joint meeting inviting the city council, plan commission members, members of the community development authority, and the board of the chamber of commerce, and Kristen Fish and Pat Cannon from redevelopment resources will be at the meeting, and we're looking to start the discussion of these different groups on economic development, what some of our priorities are, how to approach this project, and also specifically discussing a potential role of the community development authority and their involvement with economic development. And then the last update I had this evening is on the Dane County Cities and Villages meeting, which is coming up later this week on the 11th at noon in the city of Middleton. There's three main items on the agenda, an update on the state budget, discussion about legislative proposal that would allow for towns in Dane County to opt out of county zoning, and then the final topic is the DaneCom radio system. We've sent out some information, Dane County Cities and Villages has sent out some information, and there was a special D C C V A meeting that took place towards the end of February on this topic, and the main item that municipalities and public service agencies are being asked to provide feedback on is whether or not the county should go live with DaneCom essentially as built this year or this summer, and then work on phasing in an enhanced DaneCom system that would go into place sometime in 2016, or if they should wait and do the entire project in 2016 rather than implementing it in phases. From the information that Dane County has provided, what is essentially built as is would be what's called 6 dB coverage, that would be radio coverage into a light building like a wood frame home through about 95% of the county. It's based on eight tower locations, one analog tactical channel, and a paging system on six towers. For the city of Verona, the computer models and some of the preliminary testing indicates that there'd probably be pretty good and additional coverage in many areas in the city of Verona. However, there are some concerns that for some municipalities in the county that this would not provide great coverage, and it may be worse than what the current radio system is, and some of the communities that have identified their concerns include Blue Mounds, Cambridge, DeForest, and Stoughton. Dane County and the county executive have announced that they are planning to do an enhancement to the DaneCom system that would involve some additional tower sites, some additional channels. With that enhanced system, they're anticipating that would provide what's known as 16 dB coverage in 95% of the incorporated areas. That would provide much better in building coverage, and some of the additional tower locations would try to identify the concerns in areas such as Stoughton, DeForest, and Blue Mounds. That system would not be available in 2015 though, and so it's kind of asking communities, do we turn on what we have now so that people can start using the system that we've all been paying for as a part of this process versus waiting and getting everything in place and then going live with it? That's something that the membership will be discussing at the meeting on this Wednesday. Wanted to provide the council with an update. Again, I think the city of Verona would likely do very well under either scenario, but it will certainly impact some of the other municipalities in the area. And if anyone has any questions or feedback, I'd be happy to take that now or discuss it with anyone after the meeting tonight as well.
Ms. Doyle.
Mr. Burns, have you received any feedback from Chief Coughlin or Chief Giver as to what their thoughts are about this?
Yeah, I have talked with the chiefs as well as had heard comments from Chief Merlin from Fitch Verona EMS. My understanding is that for all of our emergency services, they feel that DaneCom as built would serve our community well, and part of that is the proximity of a tower location close to Verona, and that, you know, they would be supportive of going forward with the system. Specifically related to, to fire, they also see some benefits of once DaneCom goes live, that we'd be able to take advantage of the tactical system that we partnered with the city of Fitchburg on. Epic has a location at their site, we also have a location on one of our water tower sites. So, you know, again, I think emergency services countywide, the different executive committees have indicated their desire to move forward. Locally, I think that that would not be a concern to our emergency services providers, but I think there are questions in other areas of the county, and that's one of the challenges for cities and villages as an association. This may be great in many areas, but what do you say to those communities that are looking at potential issues?
Other questions for Mr. Burns? Go ahead, Mr. Yours.
Just quickly about the committee of the whole meeting, and you may have stated and I just missed it, where will that meeting take place?
Oh, I'm sorry, that meeting will be here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM next Monday.
Other questions for Mr. Burns on his report? Seeing none, thank you Bill. Next we'll have the engineers' report, Mr. Gunlock please.
Thank you. The only item this evening is just an update on the East Verona Avenue-Lincoln Street reconstruction project. The bidding documents have been advertised for this project. Bid opening will be here at city hall on March 19th. The project will install traffic signals at the East Verona Avenue-Lincoln Street intersection. It'll also lower the raised median in front of the fire station to allow fire trucks to cross that median. The project is also going to construct approximately 900 feet of Lincoln Street due south of the, of the intersection down to the, to the Big Box culvert where our project last year ended. The reconstruction on Lincoln Street has complete sanitary sewer and water main replacement, curb and gutter replacement, and new asphalt pavement. The traffic signals should be installed by June 1st, with work starting on Lincoln Street after June 15th, and be completed by September 1st. The project will also include the construction of curb and gutter along the west side of South Main Street from Whalen Road to Prairie Crest Drive to address some drainage issues that we have in that area. During construction here on Lincoln Street, we will maintain traffic as much as we possibly can, keep the driveways open to C Core, the fire station, and city hall. That completes my report for this evening. I'll try to answer questions if there are any.
Are there any questions, Mr. Linder?
Thank you, is there any update on Nine Mound Road P D interchange reconstruction? Mr. Gunlock?
I believe it's still slated for 2016-17.
Mr. Linder?
I thought we were talking about doing it 2015.
That's been moved back due to some funding issues, I believe.
Well, Nine Mound.
Oh, Nine Mound, Nine Mound to P D, that'll be done this summer if we can get the right of way purchased. As soon as we get the right of way purchased, we're going to start.
Okay, thank you. Feel better.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none, thank you Bob. We'll move on then to committee reports, we'll begin with the plan commission, Mr. Linder please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is agenda item 9A1, and I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-15-009 approving a conditional use permit to allow for a construction of a 37 and a half foot tall senior living complex on Lot 30 of the second addition to the Prairie Oaks subdivision.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yours. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit will allow the, for the construction of a 37 and a half foot tall senior housing project on Lot 30 of the second addition to the Prairie Oaks subdivision. The maximum height allowed in the urban residential zoning district is 35 feet, so succeeds it by two and a half feet. The precise implement, the precise implementation plan for this project was approved by the common council in February, with the condition the applicant shall maintain, obtain approval for the height exemption. The plan commission held the required public hearing on March 2nd, 2015, and voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. Linder, are there questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jack or Adam, do you know how common, how frequently we approve the height exemptions?
Mr. Sayer.
I'm not sure about the frequency of it, I mean, we did one last year for Epic, we did one for the Flagpole, the Wisconsin Brewing Company last year. It can be done two different ways, you can do it by conditional use permit, or you can actually go back in the general development plan and grant a zoning deviation from, from height. I would guess that, you know, depending on frequency, you probably do one or two each year. Not, not too common, but not unheard of either.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any, the motion before you is to approve resolution R-15-009. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, next is item 9A2. I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-15-010 approving a conditional use permit to allow for a group daycare center land use on Lot 1 of the Prairie Oaks subdivision.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder?
The proposed conditional use permit would allow for the construction of an 8,480 foot square foot daycare center on Lot 1 of the Prairie Oaks subdivision. The proposed daycare center would provide childcare services for children from birth to five years old. Discussion by the plan commission included current and future traffic within the area. The plan commission held the required public hearing and voted six to zero to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
You've heard the explanation, are there questions or comments for staff or for Jack or I and the plan commission? Not seeing, go ahead, Mr. Touche.
Did any residents of this neighborhood come and speak at the planning commission meeting, a little about this topic?
I don't believe so. Mr. Sayer?
The only one I can think of is if Alder Steiner spoke at that hearing or not, and I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head if he, if he spoke at that one, but no, I can't recall anyone else beyond that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, the motion before you is to approve resolution R-15-010. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Mr. Linder?
Next is agenda item 9A3. It is resolution R-15-010, excuse me, 011 approving a conditional use permit to allow an apartment land use on Lot 1 of the Scenic Ridge subdivision. I did not make a motion on that.
You do make a motion?
I do not.
You do not, okay. So are there any motions at this time or questions or comments?
I can add the description if.
Go ahead, if you would, Mr. Linder.
The proposed conditional use permit will allow for the construction of 45 apartment units on Lot Number 1 of the Scenic Ridge subdivision. The apartments would include an onsite tennis court. Discussion by the plan commission included traffic, traffic enforcement, grading, stormwater management, reducing the density, and future location of multifamily developments in neighborhoods. The plan commission held the required public hearing on March 2nd, 2015, and voted four to two to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit. Just a little more detail on that, there were questions on if we should add stop signs to, to the intersections near the development. There was talk of potentially shutting, closing one of the streets off, making it a, one or a dead end that would end up near the Lot 1 apartment. We talked about overall traffic, I think the road itself handles 7,000 vehicles, which is more than we'd ever need, but that was one of the questions. The, you know, there's a lot, the vote was four to two, I voted against it. The people that voted for it were, you know, they've been platted since the beginning, this is 2006, it hasn't changed, it's been multifamily for that long, and a lot of them didn't feel like traffic increase was that significant. The reason I voted no, I was more interested in maybe postponing to see if we could come up with something better. The, the reason is we, this, this development has a little bit different, two different features, I think, than, than what we potentially do in the future, and one is it doesn't, the original, excuse me, the first, first 60 unit or so building, there's no road divider between the building and the residence, and I think that's kind of a big deal, there's like, there'll be some screening, but there's no divider for that. And the second one is, you got to go through the residential area to get out from, from both of these units, where I think if they were both close to Locust Drive, the apartment people could get out first, and then the neighborhood people would come later, I think that would help with, with traffic. That is not an option on this at this point as we're far away, but there were just a lot of questions, I don't know if any have really been answered yet, I did get one question that I'm not sure about answering, it was, people were asking about environmental. I originally thought that, this may be a question from Mr. Gunlock, but I originally thought that all the drainage from this would go into the stormwater in, oh, lot, is that what it's called? Is that the case, Mr. Gunlock?
Currently that site drains half, approximately half to the stormwater basin and half to the west off of, offsite. After the development and the grading plan is completed, there will actually be less, less area draining to the west than there is today. So I would say that two thirds of this parcel at that time will then be draining to the stormwater detention basin. The stormwater detention basin was designed in accordance with, with our ordinances and with N R 151, which is, which is the state's stormwater ordinance. It does address suspended solids removal, peak flow control, and also thermal control. So there is some water that drains offsite, and there will continue to be water that drains offsite, but it'll be less than what's draining offsite today.
And then the last one was, one of the questions I brought up is, at the meeting was, can we have less units, you know, would less units be less, you know, less of an impact on the residence? And, you know, there, you know, it is multifamily, which means it could be townhouses, it could be condos, it could be duplexes, it could be what we got right now. So those are, there were just a lot of questions, we really don't have a lot, we don't have any answers to make it better. I know the one brought tonight was delay it. I don't know if delaying it has works because there's no plans to develop a neighboring parcel, so, I mean, if you delay it for that reason, will it ever get built, you know, that's the question, I don't know if that's what, you know, is feasible either, so. There's just a lot of questions, that's why I was looking at postponing it. I'm interested to hear what you guys have to say, we've all got a lot of emails on it, and I want to thank people for emailing and coming here today and talking about it, and they're interested in what's happening in our neighborhood, so, like I said, I'm interested to hear what you guys have to say.
Sorry, Ms. Doyle.
I'd like to, to add to that and just say thank you for everyone who reached out, and one thing that I think kind of emerged from some of the questions was that, if, Mr. Sayer, if you wouldn't mind providing some clarification about the zoning for this parcel, is urban residential, just to describe what all that entails.
Sure, so the urban, it is zoned urban residential, which is the U R zoning district. This is our multifamily zoning district, so this is the district that usually find apartments in it, and it was zoned that when the project was actually platted, which I believe was in 2006, that was when the Scenic Ridge subdivision was created, so both lots one and two at that time were, were zoned that, that multifamily designation. That district does allow 12 dwelling units per acre as part of this, so this, this project is allowed a maximum of 45 dwelling units, and they're asking for 45 dwelling units.
Other questions or comments? Boys, Mr. Sayer, if you would, there were a number of issues that were brought up again this evening. If you just want to give a little bit more background maybe, and some responses to some of the concerns?
Sure, I can, I can provide the background on the project, then I guess once I wrap up, if Bob wants to kind of answer some of the traffic comments, that might be the better way of doing it. So Andy, if you turn the screens on, please? So basically, the site plan is before you, the site plan itself provides the, kind of the L-shaped building here, that's the 45 unit apartment building. It would be three stories tall, parking for the, the project would be in the front underneath this dash line here. The dash line is actually an A T C easement, that's for the overhead power lines that currently run through the property. Their A T C has an easement underneath that area, so that's why you have limited buildings, there are actually no buildings and parking underneath that. They're also providing, providing a tennis court as part of the project, and the project would have two access points off of, of acre lane. The building itself would contain high quality materials, it's very similar to all of the project that was approved here in, in June of, of last year. We do have an ordinance that requires the use of certain materials, brick, hardy plank siding, composite siding, so it does conform with all those requirements as well. I guess I'll jump to the landscaping plan. Landscaping for the site does meet the ordinance requirements, there is a ample amount of landscaping provided around the building itself. Along the intersection of West Chapel Royal and acre, there is also a significant amount of landscaping too. Landscaping is limited, once again, under that A T C easement, they do have some plantings in those areas, but they are smaller ornamental types of trees, most likely they would get approximately 15 feet tall, and that's just because you have the, the power lines above there. A T C has reviewed the site plan and has signed off on the, on the plantings and the parking lot underneath that. I guess I'll defer to Mr. Gunlock to kind of touch on some of the traffic questions that were raised tonight.
Mr. Gunlock?
The, this, this apartment building, this, these 45 units would add approximately 60 vehicle trips to 70 vehicle trips in the peak hour, which is approximately one vehicle trip per minute, say one, one and a quarter vehicle trips per minute to West Chapel Royal Drive. As was indicated earlier this evening, there was a count done by the, by the, by the resident out there, he said there's 95, he's counted 95 vehicle trips. I can believe that. The total subdivision has 179 single family units, it has 10, what I'd say are duplex units, and these two multifamily apartment buildings. The, if all the traffic from the subdivision came up to West Chapel The, if all the traffic from the subdivision came up to West Chapel Royal Drive, and there are two other, there are, are two other streets, Scenic Ridge Drive and Whispering Pines that go out to Locust Drive, if it all came up here, that, uh, a hundred and seventy-nine units, you would have approximately, uh, seventeen hundred vehicle trips a day. I do, do not believe that that many trips come up here. I would say there might be fifty percent. So let's say there's nine hundred vehicle trips per day that are using West Chapel Royal Drive today. Typically, you say that in the peak hour, ten percent of the traffic, that the total traffic you see in a day, you will see, in the peak hour, you will see ten percent of that. So that would equate to approximately ninety vehicle trips, or one and a half trips per, 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 or, per, per minute. Uh, that seems in line with the count that, uh, that the citizen did out there. Uh, if we take this complex, say it adds another one and a half trips, uh, per minute in the peak hour, you're up to three vehicle trips in the peak hour, uh, per, per minute. Granted, and West Chapel Royal Drive was designed as a minor collector. It is forty feet wide. It is capable of handling that traffic. Yes, that is, you know, one, or say three trips per minute, you're gonna notice that the vehicle's going past your, your, um, your, uh, front door, but it, uh, it's not what's considered really heavy traffic. Total traffic on this street, when it's totally built out, will be somewheres equal to what the city currently sees on Hemlock Drive, south of, south of Cross Country Road. It's also similar to the traffic that is currently exiting the Military Ridge Neighborhood on Forest, Forest View Drive at Old PB. Uh, it is about a half to two-thirds of the traffic that would be on, that is currently on, um, Whalen Road. And again, the, the street is designed, is designed to handle the traffic. When the street was designed, it followed the city ordinance as far as, as with curb and gutter being installed grades. So, uh, the street can handle, can handle the traffic. Uh, granted, there will be an increase in traffic. Uh, with both apartment houses, there will be an increase in traffic out here, and in the peak, in, in the peak hour, the per-minute traffic is probably gonna go up by, you know, one and a half to two vehicle trips. So you're gonna have somewheres between two and a half and three and a half vehicle trips per minute in that peak hour. Over the rest of the day, I mean, we might see two thousand vehicle trips per day out there for total traffic, extended over a fourteen to sixteen-hour day. That's not heavy traffic. That just, that just isn't heavy traffic. The, the intersection of, of Acre, Acre Lane and West Chapel Royal Drive, uh, the, the east, the east intersection of Acre Lane, um, because there is a school stop there, uh, a bus stop for the schoolchildren, I would recommend that crosswalks be painted on the pavement out there, and that the Public Safety Committee, uh, consider that being a four-way stop, just to make sure that the children do have a stop sign and they can, they can cross in the crosswalk. I can't, I can't guarantee, and we've, I think the police department was out there this week, and maybe issued some tick, tickets or more, or warnings for people going through stop signs. I mean, we can't engineer that. That's just human nature and, um, but I think with the crosswalks painted on the pavement, um, and a four-way stop, it would make it a safer intersection for the schoolchildren, uh, going to and from the bus.
Ms. Ricky?
Just a direct question related to that. Do you think that should be done as soon as possible, or closer to the time of completion of any apartment building?
Mr. Gunlock?
I would say it should be done. It should be considered now.
Mr. Gunlock, would you also, as you did for the planning commission last week, would you remind everyone on the status of the Locust Street Bridge and their construction?
The Locust Street Bridge will be, the plans will be put out for bid, uh, within the month. Uh, we'll take bids. Uh, that widening will happen this summer. It'll be completed, uh, within twelve weeks after we start construction, it'll be completed. So I would say that by September 1st, there will be an eight-foot-wide sidewalk on the east side of that bridge. The existing sidewalk, well, it's a bike path on the south side and sidewalk on the north, but there will be a five-foot sidewalk that connects into that eight-foot path, or eight-foot sidewalk across the bridge on both sides, the north and the south. So people that are, that want to cross that bridge can be on, can be on a sidewalk and away from traffic. The existing, uh, clear pavement or pavement edge to pavement edge on the bridge is thirty feet. That gives us a, a eleven-foot traffic lane and a four-foot bike lane. We will be painting, um, white stripes, solid white stripes on the bridge to, uh, indicate where your traffic lane is and where the bike lane is. So pedestrians will be able to cross the bridge, and if somebody wants to walk their bicycle across the bridge on the, on the pedestrian path, they're more than welcome to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. Other questions, comments? Questions, comments? Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Adam, I'm wondering if you could just speak to, not necessarily for me, but for anybody who's listening, uh, in the public about the conditional use and then how, the, the name itself is a little bit of a misnomer, I think, when you look at what it implies as opposed to what the rights of a property owner are and our zoning.
So, each, each district has what are called permitted uses and conditional uses. Permitted uses are similar to when you built your house, or if you moved into a house. Uh, there's certain rights that are permitted by, by rights. So you have, for example, in a single-family zoning district, you have a single-family house. In our downtown commercial district, you might have office uses, retail uses, uh, a variety of, of uses in, in commercial districts as well. Uh, you also have what are called, uh, conditional uses. So you have the permitted uses and you have conditional uses. Conditional uses are, are uses that, that have kind of been recognized to, that could potentially have some adverse effects, and there's additional standards and criteria that have to be met to, to be granted. Um, so for example, every, every conditional use permit always has what we call general findings of facts. And in every report that I do for a conditional use permit, we have these kind of six findings of facts that I, that I go through and make sure that every conditional use meets those findings of facts. And then for some conditional uses, we also have specifics findings of facts, and those are applicable to each specific use itself. So we have, for apartment land uses, we have, uh, certain types of materials and, and I think dumpster enclosure as well. So there's a variety of things as well that have been met. Uh, so you have these general standards and you have these specific standards, and those standards have to be met in order to grant a, a conditional use permit. Um, so while a conditional use permit is obviously up for discussion, um, it's, and generally, it's, it's allowable by, by right with certain conditions that can be placed on it, assuming that it does meet the findings of facts with it. So, uh, you can place conditions on conditional use permits from a planning commission or council level, but it has to be obviously applicable to the project itself. But it, it are, it is uses, or there are, there are uses that are, that are allowed in that district. It's just you have a different set of standards to go through and more rigorous test to, to pass those standards as well. It's just not allowed because you own the property, or allowed because it's, for example, in a downtown, you can just do an office use down there. You have to meet a variety of criteria that, that we do go through and take a look at. So, um, pretty much the, kind of the gauntlet or the test for conditional use are those standards that we have in place, and just ensuring that those criteria are, are met, and that's done for, for every conditional use permit.
Thank you, Ms. Sayer. Other questions, comments? Mr. yours?
Sure. My, my question is actually for Chief Coughlin, if you wouldn't mind. Um, as police chief and public safety officer, and your department being there this last week, do you see any public safety concerns that would arise from this being developed?
No. Um, the concerns that we have would be consistent with other subdivisions, um, none that are unique, I guess, to this particular, um, subdivision. We were out there, conducted some traffic monitoring, um, last week, five different setups, and, um, what we noted, um, was light traffic, um, during all five, and did, uh, have occasion to make a couple of traffic stops and issued a few warnings, but, um, to, to residents that are residing there. But, um, no, none of the, um, our observations aren't of, of any great concern, certainly are no more than any other subdivision.
Thank you, Chief. Further question? Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. So you, you all know I'm no big fan of apartments. Um, over the years, I've fought against adding more apartments to our, our base for, for various, for various reasons. To me, this is just yet another reason. I, I have yet to see one of these developments come before us where we don't have people who are living there who say that they would prefer that these apartments did not happen at all. Now, I realize that, uh, the gentleman who spoke tonight was very reasonable about it and said that, uh, he understands that they're gonna go on there, and I think we're all under that impression. But moving forward, I, I would advise us, advise the council to, to really think about this. I, I recognize that there's probably a market force that drives the apartments being produced or built in our, 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 uh, community, but I don't see a huge amount of people coming here and saying they want more apartments. What I see are people who are taxpayers who keep coming to us and saying, "Don't put these here. Don't put apart, build apartments." And unfortunately, in this case, again, we are, there's, unless Mr. Sayer can tell me that we are legally within our rights to say no, we are not in position to say no to this development. And if we do, I can't imagine that we wouldn't face some kind of legal ramification from it, from, from this developer. However, from the outset, we had said, "We're not interested in having apartments in any of these parcels." That'd be a totally different argument. We wouldn't be having the argument, we wouldn't be having the discussion, we wouldn't be having to sit in front of people who would prefer that I voted no, but I can say that I can't vote no, because legally, there's no ground for me to stand on to say no. What I will promise you is that I will work with the chief, and I will work with the Public Safety Committee to make sure that we can make it as safe as we possibly can, and take, take the concerns that you have raised under, under consideration. But I, it just, it, it makes me sad, because this, this, this discussion has happened so many times in the eleven years I've been on the council. I can't believe we keep having the same thing over and over, and we don't learn from our mistakes.
Mr. McGilvery, I, I agree with your comments. Um, I repeated him just in his room the other day when we had a meeting here. I know that there's a trend and there's a demand for apartments. My personal position is let other municipalities build them if they want to build them, because I'm hearing the same thing you are, is that people don't want to see apartments popping up all over in the city of Verona. And our current policy talks about that every subdivision will have, um, some multifamily. And then to your point about, um, about how we really have no choice, uh, as recently, um, as when we talked about the phasing in or the cap on new apartments, um, this issue came up then, about how this had been approved before and it was grandfathered in as far as the cap, because the, the approvals were given back in, in 2006. I saw a hand up here somewhere. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I would like to say all of Mac's comments came out of my mouth as well. I mean, I, I've sat on the council. What's interesting is I don't, Mac, uh, Mr. Steiner, we, we were here, and, and the mayor were here when Harmony Hills had apartments come to them, and there was a higher density than what they were zoned for, and the public turnout for that was, it filled the room. And that was my first time on the council, I was a little, little shocked, and I voted against it for, for my own reasons, listening to the neighbors, and I've had the pleasure to go back to the president of, um, the Neighborhood Association that was set up to challenge the developer. And, you know, he has said to me now, he's like, "Working with the developer was great, and it ended up not being as big an impact." But I'm not a fan of apartments, period. I, I also have the privilege of sitting on CARPSY. Uh, if you're not familiar, it's Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, and part of their job is to approve urban service area agreements. I had asked Adam earlier today to give me, uh, the ratio, so the urban service area agreements, CARPSY wants to see a, a certain number of apartment, or residents per acre. And looking through some past notes from the end of last year, uh, there were a lot of comments that three point four residents per acre is considered low. Uh, but I also saw that they had, the month earlier, approved, uh, three point four five residents per acre for the city of Madison. So it kind of gives me a sense, their comfort zone's somewhere in the middle. You know, Adam told me that the Scenic Ridge, uh, neighborhood is three point four units per acre. So that they're right in the sweet spot of what CARPSY wants to see. Uh, interestingly enough, Cathedral Point is three units per acre. So as we move forward with future development areas, we have to accept that there has to be some density. I think how we work with the developers, how we zone it, will give us more flexibility, whether it's encouraging more density, but maybe not this dense, you know, something that doesn't give you forty-five apartments in this lot. But we have, this is our future, whether we like it or not. This is where Dane County is pushing us. Still not a fan, but I, I think it's important for everyone to know that we have to have multifamily. You know, we have to have it, put it somewhere, and there, there is a need, even though I'm not a fan of this kind of density. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Other questions or comments? We've had a lot of comments, and so far, we have no motion yet for any action. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess to the broader point that you're making, Mr. Touche, I would say that's true. And I, 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 I've made the argument in the past that we shouldn't do anything more than that density, because what happens is that becomes the new standard. When you say you're gonna make it denser, that is what your new standard that they will hold you to. So, moving forward, I would hope that we would find a way to do it to the minimalist point that possible. And also, I, I'm a little bit irritated that a body that's outside our jurisdiction, this municipality is going to dictate how this city develops. I have big issues with that. And I, you know what? I, I came here, much like the people who are in Scenic Ridge, I came here about a piece of property in West Ridge, because I didn't want to live like that, why, like it was being dictated in other municipalities. I had the opportunity to build two homes, and I've really enjoyed being in Verona, and I'm increasingly upset by the fact that I can see the writing on the wall that this larger entity is trying to dictate how the city of Verona will look in the future. And I would hope, as a body, we will all fight against it, because, I mean, we should have the autonomy to do that and decide how our city develops. The other thing I wanted to say is, despite the fact that I just don't like what apartments can bring, uh, to, uh, the municipality, it doesn't mean that I don't value the people who live in apartments, and that's not that I don't value the, the contributions that they make. I, I, I've had that one kind of hung around me before. And Liz and I had a conversation tonight, and there's some very interesting statistics out there that, that speak to the peoples, uh, people who live in apartments and their involvement in their community, and I'm sure that may be changing. But I, I've got an issue with the financial model, how apartments work and what they do to the city's valuation over time, and, and the, the implications to their, our services. So, I guess, and with that being said, um, I would make a motion, because I think it's important that we at least get this, uh, a vote done on this, because it's on the, on the docket, and we need to do it. So I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-011, approving a conditional use permit to allow an apartment land use on Lot 1 of, of the Scenic Ridge subdivision.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Um, Mr. McGilvery is the author of the motion. I give you first chance if you have any additional comments.
And I would just say that, uh... And I would just say that, for the sake of the process, I made the motion because I think it's important that we have the opportunity to vote on this.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to postpone the, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the consideration of the conditional use permit until the city can perform a traffic analysis and put in place recommendations regarding mitigating the traffic impacts in the neighborhood and ensuring pedestrian safety.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Discussion on the motion? I would ask staff for Mr. Gunlock, as far as being able to accommodate those studies, just so we all understand the process and the ability to do what is being requested here. Mr. Gunlock?
Well, we can do a traffic analysis. I can tell you what the results are going to be. It's going to say that there's 179 total units, single-family units in this, in Scenic Ridge. There's 10 duplex lots, and there's two multifamily, and the multifamily have 107, have 107 units. There are equations that the Institute of Traffic Engineers have in their manuals that basically say, single-family units in a neighborhood like this are going to produce approximately 10 vehicle trips per day. The apartment houses based on dwelling units are going to produce, are going to produce somewheres between seven and 10, depending if they're a single family, or a single bedroom or a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit. And the duplexes are going to produce approximately nine to 10 trips per unit. So all told, you're going to end up with approximately 2,500 to 2,800 vehicle trips in this whole subdivision. You have three entrances, West Chapel Royal, Scenic Ridge, and Whispering Pines. You're going to make a determination based on the lots that are by those, by those streets, how many vehicle trips are going to enter and leave those streets. And just the way the subdivision is laid out, I would say probably 40 to 50% are going to go out West Chapel Royal and the rest, the rest, the 50% or 60, or 40 to 60, or 40 to 50% is going to, are going to go out the other two streets. It's going to be divided up, and that's going to tell you how much traffic you've got. So Chapel Royal may have 1,700 to 1,800 vehicle trips per day. I mean, that's what the traffic study is going to say in real short order.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Just speaking in support of my motion to delay, I think that, you know, the things that Peter said earlier in this meeting and the things I've seen in my email are entirely reasonable requests from the neighborhood. I think it's really important that we be proactive about this, that we get it right. I totally understand what was said about the legal implications of the zoning and that, you know, we don't necessarily have legal grounds to turn it down. However, I don't think, I don't think a delay is too much to ask. You know, to me, I always think, "Well, if this was my neighborhood, what would I want?" And I would be really uncomfortable with the amount of vehicle trips going by, going through a residential neighborhood. I fully understand that the streets can probably handle it, but I wonder about the neighborhood itself and the people that make up the neighborhood, and if it's the kind of thing, you know, if I lived there, I wouldn't want to see 400, 1,000 extra vehicle trips. And so I think, I think it's really important that, as a city, we get this right, and I think that it makes a lot of sense to delay it until we can talk about things like painting the crosswalks, that, you know, stops at Acre Lane, additional stops at Acre Lane, and other things we can do just to make sure that this is, that we do all our homework and make sure it has the least amount of impact in the neighborhood and ensure that pedestrians are safe and that we really just do the best job that we can with this.
Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be, this is, for me, this is déjà vu for Harmony Hills. And I felt very much, as Luke stated, you know, what would I want? What would I expect? And I voted against the apartments. And, but I've heard, different than how I felt at the time, I would really like to get sent, as I look at Harmony Hills, there's two ways in and out, just like we're looking at for Scenic Ridge. So I would be really interested to know what the real impact is there. Because, Adam, you might be able to better tell me number of single families versus the number of apartments, what that ratio is, what that volume is, but for me, it feels very much the same. And if it's working out in Harmony Hills, I would feel much more comfortable about Scenic Ridge.
Mr. Sayer?
I don't have that data in front of me.
I figured, but that's kind of how I'm leaning. It's like, gosh, we have a real comparison. What is it like when this kind of development lands in an existing neighborhood?
Okay, the motion that's before us is to postpone, so let's try and keep our debate on that. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assuming we did the traffic study and if it does come back, I guess that it doesn't even really matter what the traffic study would come back, but you're talking about if there's an issue, the city would need to address it. So the end, the end result is what, if anything, can the city do to address this particular issue, given that the development is already designed and we are married to our roads in and out? I don't have an issue with what you're saying. And if the delay helps you, that's fine, but to me, I don't want to do a delay just so we can say we did a delay. You have to have some kind of idea of what you hope to accomplish after that, and at this point, I don't, is there another option? What could you possibly accomplish by doing that?
Seems like that's a question put towards Mr. Gunlock.
Or Mr. Sayer.
Or Mr. Sayer. Mr. Sayer?
Well, I guess kind of what, to what Bob said. I mean, obviously, if there's certain site issues, you can take a look at the certain site issues, if there are issues with the site plan itself, if there are questions about kind of how things are laying out on the property. I mean, those are all things that could be, staff could take a look at and work with the developer on. I think you'd have to identify those, you know, regarding the traffic in the streets, and I think Bob, Mr. Gunlock had suggested, you know, traffic, the stop signs, and then painting crosswalks. I mean, those are all things that you could put as a condition. I mean, those are all things that we have to do anyways. The developer's not going to do that. That's completely controlled by the city. If we're going to put stop signs in there, if we're going to paint crosswalks, those are city streets that we could do regardless of the developer or not. That is something that we have 100% complete control on. So with that one, I guess, you know, you could delay and do that first, or just make a commitment, the city is going to do that if that's what you want to do. But with specific site items, yeah, we could go back and take a look at things. If there's certain things on a site plan you want staff to look at, and I don't think I've heard any tonight, but if there are things you can think of, we couldn't do that. But the roads itself, that's completely, probably public safety and maybe public works.
Mr. McGilvery, and then Mr. yours.
So it does sound like there would be some opportunity to review and maybe change some things, or not? I didn't hear a specific answer.
I don't think anything's been raised. That's why I didn't get a specific answer. I haven't heard anything at the Plan Commission level. The only comment I think I've heard was after the meeting from older person Diaz was regarding some landscaping out there. That's the only comment I've heard from the Plan Commission meeting and the meeting tonight was possibly looking at some more landscaping out there. That's the only site comment that I've heard myself.
And then there was just one other point I wanted to make, as it relates to Harmony Hills and Mr. Touche's comment. I mean, the reason that I oppose that, that was going above and beyond what was already allowed use. I mean, we gave a zoning variance on top of the fact that we were plopping these apartments down in there, even though we'd already given, it was already allowed by zoning. So to me, these are a little bit different. This isn't allowed use, unfortunately, and we're not asking for a variance, or a variance isn't being asked.
Mr. yours on the motion to postpone?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of this, of offering this style of housing option for the city, and I do think we do need to have a diversified housing options throughout the city, that being multifamily, single-family housing. However, I also have a lot of respect for the gentleman who came and spoke. He gave some very heartfelt comments, and you can obviously tell he's invested in his community and his neighborhood. And if we can have some conversations beforehand that can help the residents of that neighborhood feel safer in their neighborhood, as the Chair of Public Safety, I'd be more than happy to have those conversations and have those things put into place for you before we vote on this, so you have some sort of security that the city is going to do this as safely as we possibly can, rather than passing it tonight, then having those discussions. I'm willing to give you that security and vote in favor of the motion to postpone.
Other questions or comments on the motion to postpone? Ms. Ricky?
I'm completely in support of any public safety measures that can be taken and part of the Public Safety Committee, and so I would support adding crosswalks and stop signs and that, whatever else could increase public safety. I also think an equally valid point is the point made by almost everyone who I received emails from, having to do with the water runoff and water retention. So, Mr. Gunlock, if you wouldn't mind explaining, I guess, more in layman's terms, things like solids removal, peak flow control, thermal control, all those things, because I don't understand that and I can't adequately read the plan, and so I don't know if that's something that could be studied if this were to be postponed?
Mr. Gunlock?
Their stormwater plan has been reviewed this last week, and it's in complete compliance with the city's ordinance. And the ordinance, our ordinance is written around the Dane County Stormwater Ordinance and NR 151. NR 151 is the state legislative code that basically tells you how you have to treat stormwater. And stormwater in the city of Verona, or in all of, well, in most of Dane County, the one thing that does change is the thermal control. But everything is pretty much the same in Dane County, and that ordinance was written around NR 151 also. What you have to do is, as stormwater runs off, it picks up grit and grime and solids. It goes into a detention basin, and as it goes into the detention basin, it slows down. It has a chance, the solids have a chance to settle out. So that's the total suspended solids removal aspect of treatment. The basin also treats, also contains the water and releases it at a slower rate than what it has come in at, so that you're releasing the water, you can release the water based on the one, two, 10, and 100-year storm volumes. And there's calculations that you do for all four of those storms. A 100-year storm has more flow than the one-year storm. But you, the pond has to treat, has to treat those four storms. It has to be big enough to contain that water and release it at a slow enough rate so it does not exceed the rate of the existing, of the development as it was naturally. So if that site was a prairie, in the city of Verona, we assume that all undeveloped land is in a prairie state. It has a low, a very low runoff, and we calculate what the one-year, the two-year, the 10-year, and 100-year runoff would be for a prairie. Then you develop it, you compute the runoff from those four storms, and the difference is what you have to hold in that detention basin and release at a low, at a slow rate. So that detention basin that is out there was designed for the entire development, including the multifamily. That basin out there has a, has a thermal crib in it, a stone crib. The water comes out of the basin, it flows through this stone crib, and as it flows through that stone crib, it gives it a chance to cool off. It cools the water. And because the Badger Mill Creek, it's a trout stream, runs through the city of Verona and goes to the Sugar River, the city of Verona has to have thermal control on their runoff. And that regional basin is providing the thermal control for the entire subdivision. The other item that multifamily complexes have to treat is oil and grease off of their parking lots. This development has oil and grease collection systems in their inlets, their storm inlets in the parking lot, that collect the oil and grease sheen off of that, off the parking lot as you get a, as you get a storm. And then they have a maintenance plan that every six months, those filters have to be inspected, or every three months, they have to be inspected. And if they're, if they're dirty, they have to be removed and replaced. So there's a maintenance plan that they sign off on, and the city of Verona has the right then, if they are not, if they are not maintaining that system, to go in and maintain it and assess them the cost to do that work. So we've treated, we've treated the total solids, we've treated peak runoff, we've treated, we've treated thermal, we've treated oil and grease. The other element is infiltration. If you have soils that are, that are sandy soils, we generally then have them install an infiltration basin where the water flows into it, and they infiltrate a certain amount of that water into the groundwater. But NR 151 has a number of exemptions that basically say, if your soils are this way, you have an exemption and do not need to provide infiltration. And this apartment site meets two of those exemptions. Number one, they have clay soils, they did soil tests, the soil will not infiltrate at a fast enough rate to meet the infiltration that you have to have. The other thing is, they do have some high bedrock in there, and you have to, your infiltration basin, the bottom of your infiltration basin has to be five feet above the bedrock, and they can't get something on site to meet that. So they meet two of the exemptions, and they do not have to have infiltration on site. So other places where we can get infiltration, we make them put in a biofilter that basically infiltrates. We thought about having them put in a biofilter here with an underdrain, but all that's doing is filtering the water, and our detention basin is actually doing the same thing. So we, we basically said, no, they don't need a biofilter because it isn't going to do, it isn't going to get the infiltration that we want. The other thing that they are doing on this site is they're collecting all the roof water in a, in a underdrain system and taking it to the storm sewer to be discharged into the detention basin. So they are in full compliance with our ordinance in NR 151. I hope that that helps.
Additional questions? Ms. Doyle?
I'll only go on a short tangent off the motion at hand. Although I do believe that diverse commercial and residential development are essential components of ensuring that we have a thriving community long-term for financial and economics, environmental stability. And although in this particular case, our hands are tied from previous decisions made, I do believe that it is very important, and especially since we have our Public Safety Chair here who has agreed to hear people out and make sure that we can implement changes prior to approving this, I will be supporting the motion to postpone this evening.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I'd just like to request that this, the motion to postpone could be a roll call vote.
Okay, a roll call has been requested. Other questions or comments? Mr. Gunlock, the one question I'd like to ask, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McGilvery.
Oh, I would just like to make sure, Adam, Mr. Sayer, do you feel like you have enough direction moving forward? Because if we're going to postpone, I want to have direction in place. I'm fine with postponing, but it's not fair to the people who are sitting right behind you to postpone just to bring it back in two weeks if we haven't given you direction.
Mr. Sayer?
I think the direction I've heard tonight is take it to public safety and get the stop signs and crosswalks taken care of. That's what I'm hearing tonight, and I guess... That's what I'm hearing tonight, and I guess if I misheard that, I guess...
Please, Ms. McIlvery?
Thank you very much, and I guess because Mr. Diaz made the motion, I wanted to ask him if he feels that that is what, is that the extent of what you were expecting?
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
I guess, yeah, I guess I should clarify. I think that obviously a traffic analysis should be performed, and I think it should go before Public Works and the Plan Commission again, because I think those are relevant committees as well. And we should just consider what we can do, talk to the neighbors, figure out what they want us to do, and kind of go from there.
Okay. And the question that I was going to ask, Ms. Sayer, Mr. Gunlock, was more along the timelines, because I think it's only fair for the neighborhood to know as well. So this could be, Mr. Gunlock?
A traffic analysis, if I can talk to the traffic people in our office tomorrow and see if they can, got somebody they can shake loose, and in a couple of weeks, we'd have a traffic analysis done.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? This is on the motion to postpone. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion to postpone, oh wait, a roll call, sorry. Ms. Schofield, please.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson McIlvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
Alderperson Touche?
Aye.
Alderperson yours?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. So then we are on Agenda Item 4, Under Plan Commission. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Item 9A4. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-012, approving a certified survey map to divide Lot 116 in a Kettle Creek subdivision into two parcels.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yours. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The proposed certified survey map will split Lot 116 of the Kettle Creek subdivision into two lots. The proposed land division will create a twin house. The existing dwellings are already constructed on a lot, and the proposed CSM will not change the structure but simply allow for two separate owners of the dwelling units. The Plan Commission discussed this item at the March 2, 2015 Plan Commission meeting, and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the certified survey map with the following condition: The shared wall agreement shall be recorded with Dane County Register of Deeds. So maybe we need to add that to the motion, too, that the shared wall agreement be recorded with the Dane County Register of Deeds.
And the second is in agreement with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Questions, comments? Any questions or comments on the motion? The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-012. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else in the Plan Commission?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $424,699.92.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Ms. Doyle, Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to the Bond Trust Services Corporation, payment of agent fees and refunding bonds for our 2013 obligations that we refunded, or refinanced, excuse me. Second being to the City of Madison for a cost share on the design of County Highway M., which is $34,384.47. I don't think I listed an amount for that first one, did I? The Bond Trust Services, excuse me, $198,985. The second one being, again, to the City of Madison for cost share design of County Highway M., $34,384.47. And finally, to the Waterwell Solutions Service Group, Inc., which is a, actually is a reissue of check number 96852. It was not cashed. That amount is $29,356.64.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling All those in favor of the approval of payment of bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Is there anything else from Finance?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. We'll move then to Public Safety and Welfare. Mr. Yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under 9CE1, I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a Class B beer and Class B liquor license from Tina Watson-Bircher, agent for MT Treads located at 407 West Verona Avenue.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours, anything to add?
Yes, the applicant is requesting a liquor license to serve alcohol at MT Treads Bar and Grill set to open later this spring. The 1,260-square-foot restaurant would be open daily, serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner. The liquor license is proposed for the entire building. The proposal submitted to the Plan Commission, an outdoor patio space was included. The applicant has indicated that they do not intend to license an outdoor patio space at this time. Public Safety and Welfare Committee met earlier this evening and voted unanimously in favor of approving the license.
Thank you. Questions for the committee or for the chief? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours, please?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve a Class Beer B and Reserve Class C, or Class B liquor license from Philip Hoekst, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, agent for the Hop House Brewing Company located at 231 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a liquor license for Hop House Brewing Company, a 2,600-square-foot brew pub. The brew pub will produce beer in the brewery area for the brew pub. The Class B license is required to serve other local beer, not just the beer produced by Hop House. The Reserve Class B liquor license is being requested for the ability to serve wine at the brew pub. The brew pub intends to open this summer. The liquor license application will be considered by, was considered by the Public Safety and Welfare Committee earlier this evening. There was a condition put on that motion at the committee level due to a records check, but that has been completed by Chief Coughlin, and we've been given the okay.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Are there questions or comments for the committee or for the chief? Mr. Touche?
Yes, please, no, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? The motion before you is to approve the application for a Class B beer and Reserve Class B liquor license for Philip Hoekst. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we'll let the minutes reflect that Mr. Touche upstand. Mr. Yours, please?
Thank you. Under 9C, or, yeah, under 9C3, I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a Class A liquor license from Naomi Oleo, agent for QuickTrip number 456 located at 2145 County Highway PB.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. QuickTrip number 456 currently holds a Class A beer license to sell beer and is requesting for a Class A liquor license for the ability to sell wine and liquor at their convenience store. All liquor would be stored behind the sales counter and would be accessed through a QuickTrip employee. The license application was reviewed by the Public Safety and Welfare Committee earlier this evening and was given a unanimous vote to approve.
Are there any questions for the committee or for the chief? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve a special event permit for Hometown Days, June 4 through the 7, 2015, from Carl Curtis, Verona Area Chamber of Commerce.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Excuse me. The Verona Area Chamber of Commerce has applied to host the 2015 Hometown Days Festival located at Festival Park behind City Hall. The layout and hours of the festival are consistent with last year. The application includes the event-related activities, including the parade. The temporary Class B beer license will need to be obtained for the beer tent, and the special event application will be considered, was considered at the Public Safety Committee. One thing Mr. Curtis asked us to note was that the fireworks will be moved from the Thursday evening to Friday evening this year. We voted to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Touche?
I think there are a few other things to add. It was bumped up a week earlier.
That's right.
And Thursday night, they're talking about Battle of the Bands and no alcohol in the beer tent that night, so.
That's right.
Some additional changes we have to note.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for the committee or for the chief? Mr. Linder? Excuse me, can I just clarify, these are all just one-year licenses, correct?
I believe so.
Urban.
Temporary for the special events, for the event.
The other ones?
And the other ones are for a year.
Annual? They are annual.
Okay.
Thank you. You've heard the motion and the second. Seeing no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve a temporary Class B beer license for a mud run on Saturday, May 30, from Michael Bryan of Ice Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Race Day Events has applied to host a mud run on Saturday, May 30. The mud run has been occurring at Festival Park each spring for the past few years. Michael Bryan has applied to hold the temporary Class B beer license for a beer tent at the finish of the mud run. Mr. Bryan has held the license in years past, and the location and layout of the beer tent remains unchanged from previous years. Earlier this evening, Public Safety and Welfare approved the mud run event, and as well voted to recommend approval of the Class B beer license. We had the contingency again based on records approval, and Chief Coughlin has informed me that that's all gone well.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours, anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
Nothing more.
Thank you. Next, we are under Old Business, and we have discussion and possible action. I would accept the motion to go into closed session. Someone wants to read the motion? Mr. Yours?
I move that the City Council may now convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council make, reconvene an open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Schofield, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson McIlvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
No.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
Alderperson Touche?
Aye.
Alderperson Yours?
Aye.
And Alderperson Diaz?
No.
And the motion passes to go into closed session, six to two. We are in closed session.[1378.48] We are on agenda item number 11, which is new business, approval of operator licenses. Ms. Schofield, please.
There is one operator license from Spencer Galby at the draft house.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Touche. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried and they have been approved. Their hit has been approved. We are under announcements. Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. Friendly reminder that winter parking restrictions are enforced until April 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Just a reminder about the meeting next week, Monday. Hopefully as many of you as possible can be there. I think it's important. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Touche. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.